Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call to order the work session for the Board of Commissioners for August 6th at 3:04. And we have only a few items on the agenda really to talk about an update from the CRVG standpoint and the business grants and maybe some other topics as well related to that. But we're really going to spend a lot of time doing that. Mary Kay, is there anything else you want to mention before we jump into that?
No, I'm just delighted to see documentation so I could get your approval and we could discuss what we are moving forward because we're excited to get going.
Okay, so really it's reviewing, revising, and approving some documents today. And then after the business grant, and then after that specifically going into some of the municipalities, education entities, some of the hospital medical related expenditure, potentially some other economic revitalization tourism, and then some next steps. So let's dive into the business grant and again, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. So I sent the documents to you and I know you may be in back-to-back meetings, so it's really hard to get everything, so I apologize for that. But the couple of attachments was, I'll just start off with the application from ZA. They gave us a base, a template, and then I've been sending it around and trying to get feedback, and I just got some feedback just about 20 minutes ago back from Small Business Development Center, SBDC. So I'll just open up from any of you that are on the call of any comments, questions, anything when you look at it, keeping in mind, I apologize before I ask for comments and questions. This, of course, is a paper copy, but we will be, I'm really, really happy that Chad Joyce has helped so much. So this is going to be an online application through Qualtrics. And so even though it looks really long, it's going to be into an online fashion. So with that said, I'll just, first of all, invite any questions and then, you know, we can go into it page by page or just general. I'm just going to be quiet while I listen.
Well, if you, and maybe, Mary Kay, just a very, very high few minutes of any big changes that have occurred to the application and any supporting documents, that might be helpful.
Okay, okay, be happy for that. So on page four of the application, what we're going to be looking at is trying to get at some of the calculations of if a person for a business got a PPP loan or an EDIL loan or advance. So basically what we're trying to determine here is how much the loss was and then how much the person got from other support grants or loans. And so that's going to be something that will help us determine how much in need is this business. Now, first and foremost, from my understanding, what we're going to be doing with this is the people that will be getting this first priority are businesses that haven't received any sort of funding, so they're going to be at the top of our list. So what we're just trying to do is gather some of the calculations from this, from the particular application. And again, it's going to be online. And so what we're trying to do is to gain that kind of bottom line of how much loss, how much did they get, and what kind of need are they in. Based on that, that will help us as far as seeing who is in most need and kind of do a priority order from that. So that's from the application. I'll just kind of go through it kind of piece by piece.
Okay. Any feedback now on the application?
Yeah, I have some.
Please.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we?
All the way back.
Yeah, why don't we start that out?
And all the way back, almost to the bottom of page one, you keep asking the question about how many millions of dollars in annual receipts the business has. I know that was on the ZA form, but to the best of my knowledge, it's nowhere in the legislation. And it's going to drastically.
I'm sorry, is that on page one, Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, the very first page toward the bottom.
Okay.
It keeps saying that you have less than however many millions of dollars in annual receipts. It's not in the legislation. I keep asking to have it struck because it's going to discourage manufacturing firms and high-tech companies from applying.
Okay.
Because they, and say warehousing and distribution firms as well, because their revenues per employee are quite high.
Okay, so just take that particular line out. You just.
Just that one bullet point.
Sure, no problem. It's done.
Okay. Let's see. Toward the bottom of page three, and I mentioned this one before, it says, "Does your organization have fewer than 100 employees?" Fine. We need something immediately before or immediately after that that says if you're in the tourism business, there is no limitation as to the number of employees for the ability to receive the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, so as it's written now, it doesn't meet the legislation.
Okay. Be happy to do that.
So I don't know how you or ZA wants to get that in there, but we have to be very clear that if you have less than 100 employees and you're, you have more than 100 employees and you're not in the tourism business, yeah, you're not eligible.
Okay.
Any regular business below 100, you're eligible. Any lodging, any tourism business of any size is eligible.
So Mark, if I could, sorry, Mary Kay, it is noted in paragraph three on the first page, that is noted. If you look at the last sentence of the third paragraph there, "In addition, such grants are available to businesses and other entities that are primarily engaged in the tourism industry with 100 or more employees."
Right, but if you fill out the form, you will say, "Does your organization have fewer than 100 employees?" No. And then if whatever code you put in for the NAICS or description doesn't trigger the SBA to say, "Oh, wait, this is a tourism business, we're not going to give them a grant."
I got you, yeah, okay. So something that says not applicable to tourism-related industries or something?
Right, tourism, it could just be a footnote there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it says this grant is for, I mean, you just expand, you have a little asterisk, "This grant is only for businesses with 100 or fewer employees," period. Tourism businesses can have any number of employees or something like that.
Sure. No problem.
But you'll need to work with the SBDC to ensure that if we do have tourism organizations at over 100 employees filling out the form, we don't automatically nix the application.
And I appreciate that notation because what we can do is also make sure, again, in the Qualtrics software, there are a lot of ways in which there are drop-down menus and such, so I think we'll be able to capture that, but I appreciate you mentioning that.
Good, I do like the last little bit at the bottom of page three. I don't know if you can add in, in the last little bit there, fundraisers, comma, buys more than 50% of your raw materials or products from Center County businesses, comma, farm-to-table operation, just to remind the restaurants that, you know, if you buy a substantial amount of your food locally, we want to know that. We want to, if possible, maybe give you some bonus points for that.
And I do mention that at another, on page five, but maybe what I can do is shimmy that over to where this is.
All right.
So it's kind of all in one area. But we'll get to that when we get there. I certainly noted it there.
Okay, I see, yeah. Yeah, you just move that up from the top of page five, so it's all in the same general area.
And I didn't know, so on page, at the top of page five, I didn't know if we wanted to have percentages or not, like if we want, like I didn't know how strongly we wanted to weight that because, again, I think a lot of people will say that they are farm-to-table. I think it's just much how much they are. So I didn't know, when I sent this to SBDC, they didn't think we needed that comment because we already asked them that they were going to be conducting business in Center County, but of course, this has a different meaning.
Right, it has a different meaning. I don't know, we might possibly be able to leave that up to the SBDC because I already have a list of the known farm-to-table operations in the county. And if a company, if a bar restaurant isn't on that list, the SBDC can reach out to them and say, "Hey, you checked off farm-to-table, didn't know you did that. Can you send us some kind of proof that it's more than just the occasional special you run once every other month?"
Okay. Well, what I can do, Commissioner Higgins, is shimmy that statement over to page three, so it's all in one spot. So then, let me just be clear, do we want to put any percentages or is it just more of the dropdown, do you do it or not? And then we'll kind of let it from there.
Right, off the top of my mind, I think to keep it somewhat simple, I think it's almost more of a yes or no type situation. Because, you know, we might have a farm-to-table operation that 70% of their stuff is local. We might have another farm-to-table operation where 40% of what they purchase is local. Those are still really good numbers because for most local restaurants, the percentage is zero. So I don't necessarily know if we want to have some sort of sliding scale that further complicates things.
Okay, appreciate that. I just really wanted to capture that because I know that was important.
At the bottom of page, page four, you say, "Please note here if you did not file your 2020 taxes." Well, nobody's filed their 2020 taxes yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2019.
Right, so I'm assuming that's 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
But this is the one, this is, thank you, this is the one thing I wanted to check on because Elizabeth, Elizabeth Hay from SBDC believes that we should be, when we get to the documentation of like application instructions, he put in some things that would be much more clear about that as to what they need to upload. And so, but that was a typo on my error on my part, so. And then this last, where it's, I have the big thing calculation, final lost revenue, you know, minus, this is what we talked about one day, Commissioner Higgins.
Yeah.
And what Elizabeth thought on SBDC, again, this is probably something that the Qualtrics software can do a calculation and we really, I wasn't really putting that as in asking a question, more of, I didn't want to forget some sort of calculation to happen there.
Well, it's a placeholder, I think, at this point, and I don't necessarily know if we need to have that discussion today, although it's an important discussion. Yeah, those are the comments I have on the application.
The one thing I was going to mention about the, where are businesses getting their, you know, produce from or if they're doing fundraisers, I think they're sort of like tiebreakers almost when you think about like a football game, you have the final score, you have, or maybe a baseball game, like, whatever, but making the playoffs, you know, how many, how many wins do you have? How many conference wins do you have? How many points did you score? I think those things are sort of down the list in terms of, we're getting pretty close to a coin toss in terms of if we're using them to, you know, if we need to use them as a tiebreaker or does it push them over the top to get funding or not? I just wanted, that's what you're envisioning, right, Mark? It's not necessarily, if you don't, if you, if you don't get, if you don't get 50% of your supplies from Center County, you don't get any money. It's more of a, you know, we can use that to make some.
It's right, it's, but it's stronger than a tiebreaker. I think what we've been talking about is pretty much everybody who applies, who meets the requirements, who can either show they spent X amount on COVID-related expenses or have a pretty noticeable revenue decline, pretty much everybody gets something. But perhaps companies like manufacturing firms, high-tech companies, companies that have traditionally done a lot of charitable work in the community might perhaps get more than the bare minimum.
Okay. I'll just invite any discussion about that, any comments, and I'll invite particularly Commissioner Dershowitz, if you have any thoughts, comments, edits, suggestions.
I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get too in the weeds on this. I think, I think it just was more for a business that applies that has 100, let's say they have 99 employees, and they don't do much business, or they don't, they do most of their business out of the county, and they don't really get a lot of supplies here versus a business who has five employees, which may, you know, get most of their raw materials from Center County. You know, there could be an argument that 99, 99 business should get more because they have more employees and sustain more people here, but again, that's why I was just saying, I just was curious about that. But again, we don't know, we don't know with this, so we put it out there and we see what we get, but it's good, it's good data for at least us to get, so, okay.
Anything else for the get-to-the-order on the application? I think these others may go a little quicker, but I really do appreciate the feedback. Anything else before I move on to the application?
No, looks good, absolutely. And I would say, much like we are doing, putting this into a online forum eventually, if you need to work with somebody outside of county government, because I don't think we have that expertise local in county government, but if there's a firm that could put this into a really nice-looking PDF, fillable PDF, or, you know, even make it a little more snazzier, easier to read, easier to, you know, lay out, if you needed, I'd be much in favor of that. I think all the information's there, but just in terms of it making it look a little nicer, if you need to find somebody to do that, you know, I think, I think, I think we'd be supportive of that because it just, it would make it from a readability standpoint, or if SBDC was going to do that, I'd be, I'd be supportive of that.
Right, Mike, I don't know about the, you know, having it look really tremendous, but the SBDC does have a person on staff who has taken a number of forms and made them fillable online.
Awesome. Well, this will be, I mean, like with the Qualtrics software, that's what that does, but to your point is when Margaret and I talked one day, we believe that we are going to have to have the application in paper pencil, too, to send out if somebody doesn't have access. So to that point, I think that, you know, we certainly could, you know, look at, you know, making it nicer and easier to read. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Anything else on the application? Okay. I'll just ask for any feedback then, kind of going in order, the certification statement. This is, you know, we, I took what we got from SBDC and I took from other counties and then from ZA. So this is basically just helping people realize that they attest to these things. They're certifying, they're saying, "This is honest and true, and, you know, I'm saying that I'm standing behind this." And so I didn't know if anybody had any comments about this. This is kind of more of a legalese. I did put in there, Commissioner Pipe, about the, following the CDC guidelines for COVID. And I also did put in there about the fact that since these will be subjected to possibly right-to-know, I put that in there, so again, it isn't a surprise for people if that does happen. So I didn't know if anybody had any.
I have one comment, it's pretty minor, but toward the bottom of page one, the next to last bullet point, it's in purple in the version I'm looking at, I think I saw something similar to that on the grant application. It says, "If I receive grants, loans, after I submit this application, comma." I've usually seen it as, "If I receive grants and slash or loans after I submit the application." I mean, maybe it's just me, but.
No, that's fine, that's great.
It's throwing me off.
No, thank you. Um, I did, SBDC did talk to me about that. Like I said, I got this about 20 minutes ago before the call, but the, not this, but on this kind of timeline or application instructions, she thought that I needed to embellish a little bit more of like, okay, what do I do then? You know, what, what do I do with that? So I think we, I should take that to heart, be a little more definitive. Do I just call up and say, "Hey, by the way, I got this. Do I have to return the money? What does that mean?" So I think I need to look.
That's a good point. You probably need to give them some sort of email address to say, "Hey, I got some additional state or federal money here in 2020 or early 2021. What do you want me to do?"
Yes, thank you. Anybody have anything else on this?
Mary.
Yes.
Yeah, just, just another question. In terms of the section where it says, if there was any, I guess, improper use of the money that we, they would be held liable for, but with that, is that, is that covered in the second section on page two? By signing this form, I acknowledge that the recipient is obligated to retain records. Is there, because we're basically saying that they need to keep the records so we can go back in them, but is there any, is there anywhere that says basically that if they misuse, it can be clawed back?
I don't believe it's that explicit. This came directly, this particular page came directly from the ZA, the legal, so I really left this untouched, but I can certainly add a statement in there and send it back to ZA as an addition to it.
Yeah, I've read through it a few times and I, it touches on it, and maybe that's just a simple question to ZA saying, you know, does this address clawback? But it's very thorough, I think we've really put a lot of work into it, so that's my, that's my, that's my final comment.
Okay, but I'll, I'll reach out to them. I have submitted these things back to ZA to get their input, so just to make sure, because I took their documents and was, you know, editing them. I want to make sure we're still okay, so I can certainly ask that question if they misuse the funds. Anything else from anybody? I don't want to hurry you, but I don't want to linger if we're ready to move on. Commissioner Dershowitz?
I'm fine.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Pipe, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, fantastic. So the third document is, this one is a little, it's in a rougher draft form, but I at least wanted to get the essence. And by the way, SBDC, again, who just got me some additional language, did put some more language into this document, but this is just the application instructions, and then this can also turn into a question and answer process in a sense, FAQs. At this point in time, I just kind of put this timeline in there, we're going to probably have to adjust depending upon how long it takes to get this all approved as well as Qualtrics up and running, but the notion would be that the applications would go up on, you know, 8:00 AM of one day, 14 days later, they would close at 5:00 PM. And one thing I was trying to get from SBDC is, you know, with the bars and restaurants, we knew there were 800 and some bars and restaurants. This, we know there are a possibility of about 4,800, so I was trying to pin them down of how long is it going to take them to look through things? And they, they really couldn't define, and I'm not faulting them for that, but, because they don't know the numbers, but this is how I just left it as far as a timeline, early September, the grants would be announced, and then the deadline for spending of the money. So under the the note where it says priority for COVID block grant, SBDC in their notation back to me recently just said that I should also include the EDIL advance as well as not just the loan, but also the advance. And then the eligible uses of the block grant funding, I have some of these things in red. Again, this document came from ZA, and so, you know, they put some thought into it, but I wasn't exactly sure where. I need to do some fact checking.
Yeah, Mary Kay, I think at this point, we're up to eligible uses of block grant funding.
Yes.
And it says, "To qualify, applicants must be a for-profit business founded no later than 2018." To the best of my knowledge, that founded no later than 2018 is not in the legislation.
Okay.
And have less than $700,000 in annual gross revenue. That one's absurd.
Yeah, you know what, I believe I got this, I'm, I need to clarify, I believe I got this from Lancaster County, so that must have been their stipulations.
Right, and I think the Lancaster County is populous enough that they received their funding direct from the federal government? Is that correct, Mike, or are they still our size?
I don't, they either were right on the bubble, did or did not, I can't recall.
Yeah, I know they're in that ballpark, but either way, there's no company I know of in the United States that would have 100 employees and $700,000 of gross annual revenue.
Okay, okay.
I know of companies that might have six employees that have over $700,000 of gross annual revenue, so I think that whole red section there needs to be removed. And then, again, you might want to mention that.
The tourism thing.
Tourism could be any size.
Sure, perfect.
To backtrack a tiny bit.
Sure.
I'm glad you got the placeholders in there for the Center County program timeline. But for early September 2020, I think we need to say something like, first set of grant awards are announced because we're going to give a first set to people who, to the best of my knowledge, did not receive PPP and EDIL. Plus, just from a pure timing standpoint, for the SBDC, if they have to go through 1,000 or 1,500 or 2,000 applications, they're going to need more than two or three weeks to do that.
Yes.
So I think we're going to have a first batch, and then we'll have a second batch, who knows? Maybe we'll even have a third batch of awards as we move into the fall, but to say that we're going to be announcing all of the grants in early September, that's just not enough time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was worried about that, and they were as well. I was just trying to.
Yeah, be a little more vague.
Yeah, okay, thank you. One question that. One question that SBDC just asked me as far as eligibility, and I, I need to clarify this. Is if people got like the Pennsylvania unemployment recently, are they still eligible? This came up yesterday in our call, Mark, with SBDC, when we're talking about that quick connect. I, I didn't think that disqualified them for this grant.
I don't think it does, but that might be a question for ZA.
Yes.
For, for the other commissioners, for, for micro businesses where maybe one person is the entire staff. If they're already getting unemployment, do we give them a grant? Or if we do, is it somehow reduced?
You know, every, every situation is going to be different. But I mean, we had some, yeah, I mean, it's. It goes back to the question of the legislation does not, does not make unemployment explicit in terms of basically if a grant, if a, if a PPP grant or loan has made, is made a business whole, they can't get money from us. But the legislation does not say anything about the fact that if they've received unemployment, that they would be able to, that they can't get money from us. So we could, we could ask it, but I, but it gets tricky then. Because if all of their employees have received it, but they haven't, the owners haven't, I mean, it, I, I would think that we wouldn't ask it unless we really would want to, but.
That's the question too, but I wanted to hear the opinions of the other two commissioners.
I think if you make this, if it's legally permissible, and you, I think we need to keep this as simple as we can. That would be my gut thought. I think we need to make this process as unonorous as possible. So everybody's going to be suffering losses. I'm not, the kind of money we're giving out is not going to be a game changer for people alone. So they're going to need every resource they can to help them.
Yeah, so it sounds, we would, we wouldn't ask for it then.
Yeah.
Mary Kay, just before we go off of this, the bolded section eligible applicants for this round. Restaurant and bars, are they, are they, can we ask if, if they're considered tourism businesses?
I, I put that, that part I put in just because we, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that since we were talking about restaurants and bars, that they, they were eligible for this. But we, we concern, I, I don't know where they fall. I'm not sure what, what tourism businesses really are, like how they would be categorized. Does anybody know that?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we, do we, we have any idea on that?
That is a good question. I, I mean, I know.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of restaurants that belong to the CVB, so.
Right, that's what I was going to say. There's a lot of restaurants that belong to the Visitors Bureau. And I know quite a lot of our lodging operations, not just hotels and restaurants, but even tourist sites like Penn's Cave. Either owned or closely affiliated with bars and restaurants. But maybe, maybe that is a question to ask ZA. Would all bars and restaurants be considered tourism businesses?
Certainly.
And, and I would suggest that if they are, we would put them, you know, tourism businesses, which include restaurants and bars of all sizes. Well, you know what, but I think, I, I don't know if there are any restaurants and bars. There, there may be a few restaurants and bars in Center County that have more than 100 employees. There may be a few.
There's a couple of companies that own enough restaurants that they might be over 100 employees. But they are locally based here in Center County.
Right, right. And even with that, they would only be able to apply for one of them, their businesses. They couldn't, they couldn't apply for them all. But, but, but if they aren't, if they aren't covered, I think we would just want to remove them, Mary Kay. I know what you were trying to do with, with having them be a part of the, you know, making sure that people knew. But I think, you know, we can just, if they're not a tourism business, we can just remove that.
If they are or they aren't?
If they are, are not. If they're, they are not, I think they'll, you, you could say small businesses including, which include restaurants and bars with fewer than 100 employees.
Okay.
Depending on where they fall, include that in, in one of those bullets.
So should I contact ZA then, just to ask them what they consider tourism? Tourism or like direct, like do we want to ask them a question on that? Or do we, I guess, do we really need to know that? Okay.
I think, I think it'd be important, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else stand out to you all?
Had included the behavioral health in there. Was that a specific? So if I'm a behavioral health entity and I'm a for-profit business, I think I would, I think I would fall underneath the business line of things, correct?
That's correct. Again, this was, some of this information was taken from Lancaster. Lancaster or Cumberland, I was kind of brushing them all.
I, I completely understand. I, I would just suggest taking that out. Again, it's, it's because again, if they're, they're a business and they for profit, they'll, they'll be able to apply.
I did have a question and maybe I can just ask ZA this along with.
Then were you looking at taking?
I'm sorry.
Say that again, Mary Kay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I will just say, I wasn't sure about like the county fairs, like if this is part of, like I don't know if they are for profit or not for profit. That was one thing I wasn't sure how that's going to work. And I think we'll hit some of that when we get into the Excel spreadsheet.
Right, right. Yeah, even though it was included in that bullet point that DCD has in their guidelines, they really aren't a for-profit business. So, yeah, yeah.
Let me ask.
But either way, I think there'll be a. Yeah.
I'll get clarification from ZA on that. Um, as far as the ineligible expenses, the only addition is that ZA, excuse me, SBDC suggested I put any and all expenses associated with expansion as one of them. And the other is ineligible would be not anybody that, anybody that is not in active default with the IRS. They could be making payments, but they're not in an active default process.
I mean, if that's the rule, that's the rule. Put it in there somewhere. Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So the ineligible expenses red bullet point that you put in there, and then, and that could be from Lancaster or another county. That's, that, that's reminiscent of the, of what we county government are are, are subject to. But I, I didn't think that it was for businesses.
Yeah, that one struck me funny. So that's why I put it into red. And the one thing that was kind of drawing attention to me two days ago, the DCED did a workshop through CCAP, and they kept on saying in their PowerPoint slides, revenue, lost revenue is the, the county will be taking that as their own risk. And every time I saw that, that just made me nervous. Because in a sense, I mean, it's not so much for the payroll benefits, but I mean, I, I thought we were essentially allowing for that. So I didn't understand their perspective on that. I, I need to get further clarification because it just made me nervous.
Yeah, we, you better get that one cleared up pretty quickly.
Yeah, and it kind of felt like it was one of the, it was like, kind of like a zinger in a sense. So I, I need to get clarification on that.
So you're saying on the call, so you're saying on the call yesterday, DCD said even for business grants, businesses cannot use that to offset revenue.
Well, let me, I'm, yeah, I'm going to go.
Quite what they said, they, it would appear to me that they basically have a slide deck and they just sort of cut and paste it depending on the group they're talking to. So I don't know if that was not over from a slide for municipalities and counties. But they just urged caution in using lost revenue as a factor in, in awards is sort of how I read it. But even then it was odd.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was trying, I was trying to take pictures. I just got the slide deck about two hours ago from Krista. So I was trying to look at that. Yeah, I'll have to look through that because that, that just made me nervous. So I, I need to get clarification so that we're doing it the right way, but.
Okay.
Um, anything else on this document that you think I'm missing or that? SBDC suggested that under the application and review procedures that I beefed up a little bit as far as what, again, what we're asking for and what is part of the application. You know, revenue from March 1st through May 31st is what they suggested for 1910 for 20. So there could be a comparison. And then, you know, explain, under the procedures is to explain kind of the process a little further, that they will be signing a contract with us. And so people understand that. Again, that, those are just some other notations that just came in.
Well, I like that procedures for accessing funds. I think we need to take out the word September and just say something like successful applicants will be notified, I don't know, by email or whatever, if possible, and will enter into a contract. Do we want to mention that we're going to send them, we're going to mail them a physical check?
We certainly can.
I mean, just because that's what we're doing, right?
Sure, sure.
All right.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, and then it spills over onto page three. And it just came up this afternoon. But it's looking like we will need to send 1099s to all of the businesses that receive grants.
Based on your request today, Commissioner Higgins, I did reach out to Jason Moser, the controller, just to confirm that with him. So I.
That's good.
He may have gotten back to me by the time we, we've been on this call, but.
That's, it just came up, but we probably, if we are going to send him a 1099, wouldn't hurt to mention it.
Sure. No problem. Anything else that stands out to you? Okay, so the next document I'd please like your feedback and opinion on is what, what I keep on talking about, and I think, you know, we all agree, we want some sort of fair equitable process. That's really what we're all about. And so there is a grant funding scoring matrix. And I sent you the original document that I got from another county, actually two counties that are using this. And then what I did is I went in and just redid it to what I was kind of thinking after talking to at least Commissioner Higgins. So the concept behind this, of course, would be this would go into the Qualtrics system, that we would have these as descriptors, and then they would be, the system would make some, you know, some numeric factors and rank them. So the first thing I would just ask is, is, is there any discussion about, gosh, about the whole notion of a scoring matrix?
I think, I think what you've come up with is fine.
I, I think it's a good start. I think the most important part right now is if it's going to be important for the scoring matrix, we need to ask the questions to get the data. Because it's going to be really hard to go back and ask 1,000 or 1,500 companies, hey, we added something late in the process, can you give us X? I think we can work on refining it, and I think even after we've refined it, we can pull, working with SBDC, we can pull randomly like 25 businesses or something and put them into the scoring matrix and see if the numbers make sense.
And, and I agree with you 1,000% that, that we can't go backwards and, you know, try to get the data later. That's why I was trying to make sure. So this does come out, and I just gave it the, the weighting that I did as far as year over, year over year revenue decline, I put that as a 40%. If people had more, it's, so the, if they had 80 to 100%, they got five points, so on and so forth. Down to zero to 19% revenue decline, they got one point. So this will then hopefully, how we're going to set it up, and I've been working with Chad and also meeting with the Qualtrics rep, I've met with him twice already, trying to make sure that the software can actually do this. So we don't have to go backwards in any way. So I'll just stop with that. Does anybody have any opinions, thoughts or comments on that particular ranking, that particular field?
I think we need to work a little bit on the number of employees.
Okay.
I mean, like for one point, one to five is probably fine. For two points, I don't know, five to 10. Three points, 11 to 25, maybe four points, 26 to 50, and five points, you know, 50 to 100 or 50 to well over 100 if it's tourism. I just, the number of businesses in Center County that even have 50 employees is, is a pretty limited group.
Okay. All right. So I took the notes of what you said there.
So I thought it was interesting, the asterisk at the bottom said, this could be switched or reversed to more favor the, the smaller businesses. And so I just thought, I thought that was something to kick around a little bit. And weighting them, again, this, the businesses that truly have a few people and weighting those a little bit more with the thinking that again, they probably would have been more difficult for them to get PPP. They're probably more disadvantaged during the pandemic. Also, well, that's, that's neither here nor there. So, but, you know, I, I, I think that's, I don't know, I just, I'm just curious to, I don't know, I, how do we structure that? Do we structure that again? The way they're saying it or flip it?
I, I think, you know, you can look at it both ways as far as quote, you know, the, I don't want to call it an argument, but the discussion in that, is it the small people, the, the smaller businesses that you really want to reward and award to? Or, you know, the whole notion of like, you know, I just go back to the one company I saw in one of your open meetings, like, like a CensorNet or a company that, you know, is a job creator. And so I'm, I, I really, I actually could argue both ways for it. That's why I put it this way, just to open. I actually could argue both ways for it. That's why I put it this way, just to open some discussion.
I think it's a good question. I think one, one thing that's going to inform this is just how much we penalize the firms that got PPPs and idols because those are going to tend to be larger companies. So I would say if we are heavily penalizing them for like the amount of money we have left over for them and heavily penalizing them in some kind of formula from a revenue reimbursement standpoint, I would more favor trying to give them something back on the point standpoint. But I think also just, you know, having people get up to three points already, if they just have, say, 11 employees would start to address, you know, giving still relatively small businesses pretty high point totals.
Yeah, I mean, the way that this is structured is 50, 55% out the gate is based, or I should say 40% of it's based on the revenue decline, but yeah, I'm just thinking through this. Yeah, I don't know, I would, I would almost go with one, one to 20, 21 to 40, et cetera, and starting that more at five points and working up.
The one to 20 would be the five points?
Yes, yes, yes. Because again, that's going to have, that's going to have a greater, the money that we give them is going to have a greater impact on it, on them.
All right. And you're saying that since the, the year over year revenue decline has a very high weighting, obviously in general, the more employees you have, the more revenue you have. So you're now trying to help balance it out by giving a bigger bonus to the smaller companies for employees. I see where you're going with that. Okay.
Well, then, and then also the year over year revenue, should we say the year, 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 year over year revenue, but factoring in any grants that would have been received? So if somebody lost 50% of their year over year revenue, but they received all of that in PPP loan, how do we score them?
Yeah.
Are we scoring them prior to the year over year? I'm sorry, are we scoring them prior to the, any grants, loans, X, Y, Z? Or are we scoring them afterwards? Because again, if a business, the business is made whole, they should be, I think it really should be after grants. That's, that's my, that's my thinking.
So after the grants, loans and any, any sort of support like that they received?
Right, right. I, you know, and then again, that, this helps. It's not saying they can't apply, they just don't get as much of a weight, they, if they, so if they got help, but it didn't make them whole, they still get a point. But, um, you know, we don't take anything away from them. But it really does help the, again, it's going to help the businesses that didn't get any help. And we're going to see that in the numbers.
Okay, I like the way, I can certainly add to this for that. I will just mention before we go any further on this, the other counties that used a scoring matrix, they did not share that upfront. And the progress grant didn't share their scoring matrix upfront. Because then you get the whole notion of the person could, you know, kind of like have the answers to the test and try to push their data to be more in line with this. So my thought was going to be that, I mean, certainly after the process, we could share the data. And I just wanted to open that up for discussion to see what everybody else felt.
Well, and again, I'm not trying to, I don't want to complicate the simple. I appreciate what Steve's saying. But we may want to expand this a little bit as well. So you've got, you know, instead of it being a total of, you know, five points per category, you may want to spread this out. So we don't have as many quote unquote ties. You may want to make it either increments of 5% or 10% instead of increments of 20. Same thing with number of employees. We may want to take that out as being a total of 10 points. And then just have one through, one through 10, you know, 11 through 20 and expanding it a little bit instead of us just having four, you know, five, five points that we can award. I think it's going to make things too tight, I think.
Okay, I mean, I'm not changing, I just not sure I can vision exactly what you mean, but I'm happy to.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, go ahead.
Instead of a 10, instead of a five point process, a 10 point process.
Correct, correct. For at least those categories, just to give a little bit more of a, of a differentiation.
Okay. I can play around with that, yes.
Yeah, just, yeah, just a suggestion.
Yep.
And then I think you could do the same thing for the length of time in business where that could be, you could get a little bit, I, I, I think, again, I think businesses that have been in, I think we want to wait a little bit heavier. Again, I, again, I'm not, the businesses that have been around for a shorter amount of time, shouldn't they get more points? Because they're more at risk at, at not having a customer base. They'll paying off a lot of, you know, equipment they might have purchased. You know, paying back loans. Shouldn't we be incentivizing them more?
Again, I think you could argue it either way. So I'll allow to hear, I'd love to hear what the other commissioners feel about that.
Um, I don't know, since your average small business only lasts about five years, I would lean on this one to, you know, we could spread the category out broader. But I think we should kind of reward the companies that have been around a little longer because they're more likely, especially if we can give them a little help, more likely to be here next year and the year after next. I think if we have a two-year-old business that wasn't doing so great to start with and now they're trying to deal with COVID, I don't think there's any amount of money we could give them that would make a difference. But I do agree that, you know, we're already giving people enough of a clue in the questions we're asking in the application as to what the weighting factors are going to be. I don't think we necessarily want to be publishing the final version of the weighting system because as you say, then people will fill out the application to game the system.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
And again, that was, it was more to, you know, to think about this because, you know, the, the application certification, FAQs, that's kind of the, you know, that's kind of done. We've got really, we've got that as a nice package, but it really does matter what the scoring criteria is. And I'm just putting that out there. I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, yeah, so I just, you know, throwing, throwing that out there for discussion. So. Yeah.
I think that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Higgins, go ahead.
Well, why don't you go ahead? What you might, what you're saying might affect what I'm about to say.
No, all I was going to say is I think the more that we can refine this and have it really nailed down, like I, I read a book one time called Nailing Jello to the Wall. And I think what we don't want is we don't want that. We want to be, have a process that's very, as much as, as much science as there is with a little bit of art.
Right.
You go ahead, you go ahead.
And I think we'll also think of this, we don't need to decide it this afternoon. But I think we will eventually need to decide. It's like if you meet the minimum requirements, do you get some money regardless? And then the scoring matrix is used to determine if you receive, you know, more money than the bare minimum. Or are we using the scoring matrix to say, you know, and I don't know, maybe we'll just say that it ends up being a 50-point system. And if you're nine points or less, you don't get anything. You know, and if you're in this range, you get this much. And if you're in this range, you get this much. And if you're in this range, you get this amount of money. I think we still have to talk that through.
I'm also open to SBDC getting all of the data together. You know, structuring it, having it ready. And then if possible, for us to be able to say, well, what if we would do this? What if we would have these numbers in there? How many could we, could we help out? Because again, if a business applies, that we're going to have a lot of businesses, or we could potentially have a lot of businesses that are applying that have already gotten the PPP money, but they're thinking, you know what, doesn't hurt to apply. And so the way that we have, the scoring is they get a zero, or they, they might get one point. You know, if they've been made whole essentially from the grants and the loans and all that, they would get zero, but they still could get a five for everything else. You could have a 10-year, 11-year-old business that's in manufacturing that has, you know, 80, you know, 90 employees and they would have 15. Or, you know, in terms of the weighting of how that all works, they could be at the top of the heap. Where a business that's been struggling, it's small, it's not, it's a restaurant and it's only been around for five, you know, for eight, nine years. The way that this scoring matrix is set up is the business that's been made whole by PPE would actually be, would actually be, would have potentially the same amount of points at the end of the day. So I don't know. I mean, there's a part of me that says, let's just kind of say, let's, let's, let's get all the data in and then see what SBDC has and we can then factor it in because again, we don't know, we don't know. I mean, if we could maybe ask them, I would think if we could ask them, you know, could you, how, how mail, how, how, how malleable, malleable can the, can the data be that we get back? I mean, would SBDC be able to give us different, you know, if we scored it this way, if we scored it that way?
And the people that will be doing that is Chad, our internal person through Qualtrics. Because I mean, when I had a meeting with Qualtrics with them, I mean, it sounds like you can play with this data as much as possible. It's going to be fed to us in a certain way. And then we can, we then can send it over to SBDC and they can convert it into Excel, into other file types. So I do believe that we will have a lot of robust data that we can manage and play with.
And like one, one way to handle the PPP and idle is to move it to the front of the spreadsheet. And to say, okay, as a business, you had a reduction in revenue of $100,000. But your PPP and idle loans together were at least $100,000. Well, you don't even have a loss here. We probably shouldn't be granting you any money. But what if your loss was 100,000 and you got $25,000 of federal assistance from the proper buckets? You know, then maybe you get three quarters of the award you should have.
Yeah, but again, I mean, and I don't, again, we're getting into the, I think, the really finer points with this, which I think are important, but is the way that we understand it from ZA is that if we have 100, I'm just throwing this number out here. But if we have 100 businesses apply and 50 of them have received PPP, idle, et cetera, and 50 haven't, do we just need to make sure that all 50 that haven't receive funds? And then we can give out the rest? Or do we have to give all the money we allocate for businesses to the 50 that didn't get it? At what threshold essentially do we have to, can we start to give money out to the businesses that did receive the, the other grants? Which I think, so again, I'm more asking that out loud, just because I think it's important for us to, to know.
I'm under the impression it's the, it's the second one, Mike, that if we receive 100 applications and 50 of them are from businesses that haven't received any of the federal funding PPP idle, we need to send them the money first. And then when we have so-called leftover money, even if perhaps we budgeted at least some leftover money, that then that leftover money goes on a reduced basis to the organizations that got PPP and idols. But that's the impression I'm under. I might not be correct.
I can certainly send, you know, the question to ZA to find out how other counties have done that because there are some counties that are ahead of us. Not many, but the ones that got the federal funds. I was not under the impression, you know, say we, say we were just giving out a million dollars to businesses. I was not under the impression that if 50, if 50 companies applied that didn't have that, you know, didn't do PPP, we don't have to give all that money out. It's not, it's just a matter of they should get served first is how I was gathering that. Like the first batch, I think Mark used the word batch earlier, like the first batch goes out to those folks.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just was more just asking the question just to, for us to be aware of it. Because it gets, it gets into the idea of, again, if we pull up that scoring sheet, if you have a business that's been around for one, and again, we, I know we made some changes, but if we do a business that's been here one year, again, I've got nothing against pinball machines, but let's say it's a business that sells pinball machines. I am a big supporter of pinball machines. I love pinball machines. I'm just putting it out there. So they get one point for being around for at least one year. They get one point for being in the other category, I think we can say. And let's say it's got two employees, they get another point there. And so, but they haven't, but they haven't gotten any grants or whatnot. You're gonna, but, 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 you know, and so they might be in the three point, four point, you know, frame or scoring. But as soon as you have a business that's, you know, but what I should say is they should get money before any other PPP, even if it's a been here 20 years, manufacturing, 90 employees. You know, that's how I, that's how I'm trying to understand it. So I just want to make sure we don't lock into a, a matrix that has the, the companies that, it almost would be like we have two matrices. We'd have one matrix that's for, for the companies that don't have any, that don't get any federal or state aid. We give all, we give enough, we give money out through that. And then we come back around and say, okay, here are the businesses that, that did receive federal aid, state aid and other categories. And now we're going to give another round out. So basically, we're not, we're not having the businesses that didn't receive funds and the businesses that did receive funds competing against each other within the matrix. Maybe that's the best way to say. Does that, does that make sense? Because it's not the same. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be the same, I don't. Because we've got to give preferential treatment to the people who didn't receive any money yet.
Yeah, and I'm not sure we need a second matrix. I think we just need a second batch is what would probably be, that's how my mind would be thinking. It's like, it's like, it's like FedEx, you know, first priority, it's going to get there overnight, like here's the check and then it's the next, it's kind of like regular mail kind of thing. I don't know if that's a good analogy, but I don't, again, I don't know that we need a second matrix. I just think we need a the priority. And I'll invite discussion on that.
I think the FedEx analogy is fairly good. You've got priority overnight and standard overnight. They both get there the same day. They both get roughly the same level of service. It's just that the priority packages are in the first batch. They're delivered at the beginning. And then the standard overnight, it still gets there the same day, but it might be three o'clock, four o'clock, five. five o'clock in the afternoon. They still get it, you know, in time to be helpful and well before the deadline, but they get it later.
So we're saying we don't do two, two ways of, or not think, we would, we would still be scoring all the, because my understanding Mary Kay is, so I thought the Qualtrics was just to get the data into the SBDC's hands and they would do whatever they do. But it sounds like the Qualtrics form is going to allow Chad, whomever, SBDC to put actually the weighted, the weightings in when, when people are inputting. So when people hit submit, it's going to kind of go through its own formula and spit out a result.
That, that is how I'm understanding Qualtrics. I'm understanding that it's a really powerful tool. And so we have to make sure to, you know, what Commissioner Higgins has said earlier, we have to make sure that everything we're asking as far as a scoring matrix, there's a question assigned to it. And so if I say I'm a business that has been in business for 10 years, that then there's already computation in the background, making, giving me points for that. I have, you know, I've had a lot of revenue decline. And so the computation will be going on. And so whenever SBDC gets this information, and we'll be getting it all along. Whenever we're getting it, it should be, it should already be putting into a rank order. And then, you know, I believe what we could do is then, in a sense, cut the data. And I will clarify this with Chad, but we could cut the data in that perhaps we could get two different lists. We could get one list of people that have not received any PPP, any, you know, loans. And they would be ranked and perhaps we could get then another list cut where people have received it. But then it's, it's, you know, also ranked. So that, that's how I'm understanding it, but I'm not familiar with Qualtrics. Never heard of it actually before this week.
No, that's helpful. And I'm looking at the scoring application. I think probably the ones that, the one that's going to be, and again, you know, let's, not trying to complicate the simple, but we've got the tourism industry that's allowed, you know, they can, they can have as many employees as they want. So do we want to, do we want to? Do we want to, there's not going to be a separate forum for the tourism industry. So if there's, if there's a tourism related industry that has, you know, 100. So I'm, again, the way that we have this set up, it's a, it's, if it's more than 100, they get no points. But that's under the assumption that we're basically saying to them, saying to the business that's applying, we, we told you, you can't, you cannot apply if you've got 101 people. Where if it's a tourism industry, my thinking is actually, we'd want to award them points because the tourism industry has been hit the hardest.
So what, I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah.
What we may be able to do then is have, again, have some sort of, they called it like contingency questions or condition questions. So, you know, if, if yes, you're in the tourism industry, okay, you're going to go down this branch. But I appreciate you saying that. I made a note because I think that's a good thing to, to notate, notate there.
That's exactly what I, that you, you answered the question. It's a conditional question. If they hit yes to I'm a tourism industry, they then get a different scoring criteria. Okay. Got it. Or in the backend, it will be seamless on the, they won't know, know that, but on the backend, it would be, you know, thought about. Okay.
Yes. But I'll confirm that.
Okay. I think the one that SBDC is probably going to have to do. The only thing that, I'm sorry, Mary Kay, the only thing that SBDC is going to do some legwork on is going to be doing the NI or NAIC because they're going to have to go in for that 35% category to figure out what business, what, what industry they're in, right?
Yes, yes. And I think, I mean, the, the piece that the SBDC is, you know, Commissioner Higgins has, you know, figured, you know, helped us with is that they're going to have the, the barometer of knowing. You know, I was using the example of, I'm going to call Mary Kay Cosmetics because I don't sell it. Great company. I don't sell it though. But if I, you know, if I put in an application that I'm a cosmetics company and I've gone into see SBDC for three other companies, they're going to have that, that honesty factor to realize, hey, this, this company doesn't sound quite right. It's kind of, somebody said at one point, I think Steve said the smell test, you know, to kind of be like, hey, is this right? So they're going to be performing that for us as well. I was trying to figure out how to say that in a draft MOU to see what that really sounds like.
And thankfully. Sounded great.
Thankfully they can give us the feedback and it's, it's very numerical, like all manufacturers start with the number 31, 32, or 33. You know, real estate rental and leasing companies all start with 53. Trying to find lodging in here, I'm sure they're in there somewhere. But it's pretty specific. And when people are applying, we're giving them a link to the website so that they can say, oh yes, I am, here it is, accommodation and food service. I'm in seven, I'm in 7212 or whatever. We just say, okay, there are 72, they are allowed to have any number of employees.
Okay. Thank you. So when we're looking at, and I know I'm past already 20 minutes, 21 minutes past our time. As far as looking at the economic impact on Center County, the different types of jobs, Commissioner Higgins and I had some discussion about this. So I guess I would just ask you to read through those and I'm, I will be right back. I just have to have a quick biology break. I'll be right back though, as you take a look at that.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I did know if you had any comments regarding just some of these descriptors that I put in for us. And I did note, like you'll notice in the four points I put in, again, you know, kind of the, the farm to table. I don't know if that's something we can put out there, so I'll, I'll, I'll just be quiet and ask for opinions.
Yeah, I, my, my thing would be if we're, if we're not putting in the score sheet, we, we would have to figure out how we're, how we're using that. Cause it gets into my, my, my point earlier about it being more of a tiebreaker than not. So we just would have to figure out how do we put that in there? In terms of wait, weighting the criteria.
I mean, yeah, Commissioner Higgins, do you have a, a thought?
Well, again, it, it depends on exactly how we're going to use the scoring sheet. But, you know, there are types of businesses that generate more jobs than others, have more growth potential, aren't directly tied to servicing Penn State students or even just like say barber shops and hair salons. The number of those you have is, is highly dependent on your local population. It's not something easily exportable. But there are metro areas that have a lot of consulting firms, have a lot of high tech places or have a lot of manufacturing or do a lot of agricultural processing. You know, the number of those types of firms, which are great job creators, it does definitely does not vary directly depending on your population. Like Lancaster County is like, I don't know what, maybe three or, three or four times our size by population, but they have something like 8,000% more agricultural processing jobs than we do. So I, I think we should wait those companies, encourage those companies, either try to get them more money or at least make it much more likely that they're going to receive the minimum grant total. Then say, I think at one point, Stevie, using the example of somebody who's canning stuff in their basement and selling it on the side as a gig job.
I mean, maybe if we want to get real specific with that, I mean, you know, kind of going back to the NAIC codes, maybe that's where we can be very factual on the type of points that, you know, manufacturing. So NAIC codes, you know, 51 could be made, you know, manufacturing. They would get the five points, you know, high tech broadband, you know, I'm just, that might be another way of being very factual and data driven.
Oh, right. I would think that we would eventually convert those to the codes so that it's easier and much more transparent for SBDC.
I, and, and I am certain that I missed a lot of the, again, I first got this data from, it was Lancaster and it went to Union and went to somewhere else. So I'm fairly certain I actually added some things, but I still think I'm missing things. So.
But thankfully in the major categories, there's only like 20 or so major categories on the, the high level list. So it's not going to be that much work to put them in the matrix and determine what their point total is.
Okay.
And, and so just in terms of the farm to table, so it's, it's really a subcategory.
Right. That's about the only one we have.
Right, right.
My knowledge, just practically everything else, either you're a manufacturer or you're not a manufacturer. Either you're in lodging or you're not in lodging. But, you know, there are types of restaurants and bars. Brew pubs would be another example where they generate a whole lot more jobs locally and have a bigger impact on the local economy and make the area more unique as opposed to just a regular old bar.
If we're not asking the percentage anywhere in the application, I'll, I'm not sure how we would give points to that. I, I just made that up as far as just as again, a placeholder discussion, you know, that can obtain 60% of their supplies. So I don't, I, I'm sure that would have to be changed unless we ask a question behind it. And again, it might be more what people are saying as far as a thing that will help us make a further decision.
Right. And, and thinking through how if, you know, 40, 40 or 50 restaurants, say, I'm looking at the question here of how it's worded on the application. But if 50 restaurants and, if, yeah, if it's in the, if it's in the describe section, it gets a little trickier. You'd almost want it to be a checkbox of fundraisers, a checkbox for buy your raw materials. And the job creator of 10 or more employees, what, what does that mean?
Well, that was just, again, these were just ideas, like a streaming of ideas of trying to.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, just to make sure that we would have some discussion about that. So, but I do like, and I do know the Qualtrics can do a lot of dropdown as far as selection, as far as conditions. So I was just putting them in there as a what do you think kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I get big, big picture, it'd be good to, the application, the scoring sheet has little work for SBDC to pull things apart. And it just sort of, it's, it's very malleable and we can, it can be very easy for us to see the scoring, you know.
Yeah, I'm really grateful that Chad Joyce, you know, got us involved with the Qualtrics. Cause I think, you know, I keep on going back to, and this is probably my HR background. But, you know, if you have, you know, one business that, you know, that is very similar to another business in Center County and says, well, why did he or she get more money than me? You know, at the end of the day, we at least did our very, very best. Again, to have some science and data behind it rather than them, somebody feeling that, gosh, it's just because Mary Kay really likes to go to that place, that it takes away that, as much of that away as possible. Any other discussions about this? Cause I can go through and I'm sorry, Michael.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just saying if there's any more discussions, again, I'm happy to discuss this as long. And I also want to be sensitive. You've been in meetings all day, so I don't want to, you know, linger.
These, look, these business owners are working around the clock to keep their business afloat. I think we're all able to go a few more minutes here. I think, and I think we're wrapping it up on this, this standpoint. But during the period that began March 1st question, which is period, which is page four, and then the briefly describe how your business loss economically impacted Center County as a whole on page four. From my standpoint, that's sort of not, it's sort of subjective where, you know, I, I don't know how those questions, I think it's fine to ask those questions on there, but I don't know what, um, how we're going to use them to score things. Because again, they're very, very subjective in terms of that. So if they're more for just for us to have that for, as a record, okay. But, you know, if we feel that it's important to have those questions on there, fine, but I don't know how we really use them, I think, yeah.
Again, maybe what we can do is maybe we could create some, I could create some language to make them into dropdowns. You know, that maybe it could be, you know, a selection of four and then maybe other. That there's something that we get some data from it that might relate back to the point system.
Okay, that's fair. Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking into what Commissioner Dershowitz, what Steve had mentioned, making it as streamlined as possible. We're balancing the need to be able to get enough data so that we can rank these and, and make distinctions between the businesses. But at the same point, you know, it feels like more of an essay question where they're going to say business was, was hit hard, had to close down, had to sanitize. Where I think, I think 95% of businesses are going to say that. So I, what, what do we, what, what do we gain out of it? And I think it would help to get businesses hitting the submit button sooner rather than later. So I'd be in favor of taking the questions off unless there's, there's a, you know, a sense that we should keep them on.
I'm happy with less is more. I didn't know what, Commissioner Higgins, if you had any thoughts on that?
Well, less is a good thing. I've pulled up the application, but I've got so many documents open now, my laptop's really laggy. So we're on like, what, page three here?
Page four, top of page four, there's two, there's two questions.
Okay.
Up there.
On the application?
Yes.
Oh, yep, yep. Okay, sorry. Yes, I meant on page, top of page four and not on page three. So you're talking about the, just pulling out the second question?
My suggestion was to remove both because they're going to be, there's not going to be a lot of, everybody's going to say, shutdown order affected me. Everybody's going to say, you know, I had to do deep cleaning. And I don't think it gets us a lot. I think, I think everybody's going to have a similar answer. And it's going to, it's going to be more work a business has to do to document all the, you know.
All right.
Yeah. So I, and I think, you know, I just, I don't think it gets us anything. I think the numbers, this, this This, the scoring numbers are probably going to be the best way to for us to you know, score things. So yeah, my suggestion, take it off the app, take both off the application.
Um, okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Sure.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
That looks like, did we run the gamut there, Mary Kay?
I think we did. I mean, I, it, it feels like I have questions that I need to go back to ZA. It would be good for you all, you know, to kind of sleep on this. Think about it, because a lot of times when I'm driving somewhere, I'm like, oh gosh, you know, what about this or that? So I would invite, you know, your continued feedback for this. I can revise, revamp and get something back to you. You know, by, depending on how long it takes ZA, so I'll say by Monday. But if I can get it back sooner, I mean, I'll be working on it. It's just a matter of fact, if I can get answers back from them about tourism and such. So I'm okay at this point. I don't, I'll invite any other comments or questions or suggestions.
No, I think you're on the right path. Just use your judgment. You're going to be doing the one, you know, primarily as the gatekeeper score in it. So be comfortable with the information you're going to be gathering and, and the way it's weighted.
Thank you.
Yeah, from my standpoint, we're getting there. We're almost there, almost there.
Yes. So the question I have is, it's 436. We're, I'm happy to continue on. I don't know if we want to take a look at the pie chart data or if we want to create another work session. I'm happy to do either.
Why don't we go until five and see how it works?
Okay. Need to do that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's good.
So if you all could please get out the Excel sheet that I sent over, I'd really appreciate that.
Sounds good.
So this was what we first presented last week, what I first presented last week at our work session. Of just taking the 14664 and how it would go into buckets. And so there was, this isn't a lot different than what you saw last week, except the Center County government internal cost went up because we had some additional things that we could put into that bucket. So last week I had a contingency bucket, but that bucket went away because we went into the Center County internal, Center County internal costs. So if you just take a look at this pie chart, what this simply does is just shows the representation of the 146 and kind of where, where all the pieces of the pie come. And I'll just ask for any, I wanted to go through some of these slices of the pie individually. And you'll notice on the Excel sheet, there's a tab below for each one of these slices of the pie, just for some discussion. But I'll just stop here for a moment, just ask any suggestions, ideas, comments about the pie itself.
Look straight forward.
I think we're probably going to have to work, we're probably going to have to modify that as we go, as we see what kind of participation we have and what type of interest we have.
Yes. I, I would a thousand percent agree. I mean, I think that's, you know, like the, the pieces that we have for the business grants. If we get less than we think we're going to get, you know, we can either have a choice of making that pie go somewhere else, or if we get more, you know, we can take a look at it. But this is just kind of a discussion point to see if, you know, kind of where we're going and how we would split that pie up. So the one I would like just to draw your attention to, the, the tab at the bottom. The first tab is pretty straightforward. It's just grant administration costs, which is $200,000. And then I just put some number, again, some placeholders in there. I, I have no idea. I can certainly get the, you know, for the grant coordinator salary and benefits, I was going to get some numbers around that. We know the ZA consulting is occurring, but I just put that as a number. And then today we just approved the Qualtrics software. And so what you will see in each one of these is just either what we've spent or a rough estimate, and then the unallocated balance left. So I'm just going to keep motoring unless somebody has a question, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
When we take a look next tab, the Center County Government Internal Cost. There's just a few questions I wanted to make aware of you. So you see our number went up on this, and I do see that Krista is still on the call if there's any, you know, questions. She and Margaret have just done a stellar job, you know, pulling a lot together for this. But one thing that you will notice still, what is not on this list is any information from McClure. Because Krista is still waiting for that information as far as the, the heating system. And then I just wanted, thank you, Krista. Nice to see your, your shining face there. And so I'll just pause for a minute. Krista, is there anything that you want to say regarding this, this piece of the pie, so to speak?
Sure. Is, am I sharing a screen or not? Or can you see me? I'm confused with blue jeans.
I can see you not the, I can see you not the, not any data.
Okay, great. So I do want to bring, bring you to update Commissioners on McClure. They will be on premises next Tuesday. The two folks from McClure will be walking through the Willow Bank at least to assess our equipment and be able to give us our best options. So until then, I do not have a price update for you. I will add one other thing is that during the DCED webinar on Tuesday, found out an interesting detail that we could potentially ask for reimbursement for costs to deliver meals to seniors. And I don't have costs yet to present to you, but I am working on that to see if it's a, a good expense that we could ask for reimbursement for. So those are, there's a kind of the two outstanding things and would love to bring them to you next week. Aiming for Thursday.
I, the only other one I just wanted.
I was going to say, that would be, that would be a big one, because I want to say that that's about a $400,000 a year budget expenditure, the meals for seniors through the transportation office. In addition, we've had a little bit of an increase as the senior centers have closed down. So that might, that's, that's a big, that's a lot of money. So that's great. You're checking in on it. Thank you, Krista. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And that's all that I have.
If, if you just hang on for a second here, is that one thing that came up is 911 was asking for radios. And so this of course would be an internal cost. So we had a bit of a go around with this. ZA thought that that was not an expense that could be used. And then it seems like there was a sales firm that got back to our 911, basically saying how other counties are using radios in for this. So I, I'm at a loss on this one at this point in time, and I just wanted to present that. I just wanted to put that out there, just to make sure that you were all aware that even though ZA said that it's not an excusable expense, other counties are saying that they may be going forward and using it.
The, the challenge with that, why I probably wouldn't be, I think it's an incredible, incredibly important expense. The problem is you don't have to buy, if you need to buy new radios, like a brand new radio because of COVID-19, not replacing an old one, buying a new one because you're doing, you know, fire departments doing more calls or EMS, they're doing more calls. But to replace radios, that was already going to happen whether or not the COVID pandemic came. So I don't, I don't think, you know, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't think it'd be an expenditure to hang our hat on, from my take.
Understood.
It, it does seem a little risky.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dershowitz, did you have any thoughts or anything you wanted to add to that?
I don't think it's an allowable expense. I, I don't think how we could stretch that, so. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring it forward. Margaret asked that I bring it forward, just so everybody understood. Thank you. Okay.
One thing I, you know, one thing I think we might be able to do though, to, to Michael's point, I think we might be able to buy some new radios. And you know, for pandemic relief and maybe charge them off that way.
Okay.
But as far as replacing them, I don't think so.
So Krista, maybe Dale contacted you first correctly? No, did he first contact you? Margaret did, okay. Okay. So maybe we can find out if there, you know, there's, that's an allowable expense if it's just a few rather than the whole series.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Krista. Thanks for all your help. You've done a great job. Appreciate it. All right, we're cooking with oil now. Here we go. We're already on page four with the government boroughs and authorities. If you wouldn't mind looking at that tab, I'd really appreciate it. So in the slice of the pie, we kind of put in 1.7 million on this. And based on just some, some of my rough numbers, Michael, thank you so much. You gave me the populations that were all correct and up to date. So this is just something to put in, keeping in mind, we all know municipalities, boroughs and such. We're going to award them a, I'm going to, an award, but they have to actually give us receipts for actual expenses. Except for police force, I believe that aside from police leadership, that police and security force can be, we can directly pay police force. So let me just step this through. The 1.7, and all I did was take the number of population by $10 a resident. I was just looking at a number to go. So we're at 1623. We have an unallocated balance of about $76,000. So this is the data you're going to see next to it in the blue. This is what they requested, if they did request. So, and then I tried to make it an asterisk by the, by the organizations that I knew had police forces and I may have missed one, two, one or two. So I will just pause for a moment and ask for a discussion of this process, what else we could do, any other ideas? For a way.
Well, I, I've, my, my only suggestion, as I've talked to a couple of people about, I don't think, Mark, I've had a chance to talk to you. I would like to, to give a special allocation for the Belfont Police Department. And if, if we would consider that, I would be extremely grateful.
Well, yeah, I'm going to need some additional details. I don't know, maybe offline or something. And then we got to be careful because we've got, what is it, six or seven other municipalities in the county that have their own police forces, and I'm sure they're going to ask for a special allocation over on top of these funds as well.
Well, the, the only difference is Belfont is our county seat. And it does protect all the county, all the county property. So I would, I would argue that that would be my, my response to them in regard to that. So. But I, I can talk to you about that later, that, that more informationally.
Okay. The one thought I, I have on this category, Mary Kay. I think we might want to set an earlier deadline for the municipalities. Because some municipalities have already asked us for more money than we might be granting them. Others, especially ones where their entire staff is like a part-time secretary, might love the fact that they're going to get, you know, 10 grand. But they might have trouble spending it in time. And if they can't, I'd love to reallocate that money either toward other municipalities or nonprofits or whatever.
Yeah. And I agree with your, you know, your thought process on this. And so this is why I'm, I'm kind of pushing this one forward. Because as soon as we could get, you know, some sort of idea of what we want to give people, we could start this process. We could start, you know, writing a, basically a form letter to say this is, you know, this is how we came up with this number. And by the way, this was my way, this was my formula. You all as commissioners might have a different process and a different idea than I do.
But I remember Mike was talking about giving a minimum, whether it was five or 10 grand or whatever, to each municipality, and then we would dial back the $10 per head to something more like maybe seven or eight dollars a head. To make up for the, raising the minimum.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was basically where you would, you would take, everybody would get eight grand. And so that was, I think roughly 04, that was 360,000. And so you would take then the 1.7, subtract the 3, the 360,000, and with that 1,340,000 left, you'd then divide that up proportionally until you get a per person amount. You know, I think it might be like, what, like, you know, eight bucks, like eight bucks, 50 cents a head, something like that. But it just, it just allows it, the smaller municipalities not to get at least nothing or, or very little, and they actually have something to use. And the, so I think, I think it works out through every municipality would get at least $10,000. With the 8,000 plus the, I think the lowest amount was about 2,000 something. They get at least something.
Yeah. If, if you take a look, I think the only ones that are less than eight is Burnside Township and Burnside Curtain and Howard Borough. Wait, excuse me, there's another one, Phillipsburg Borough. So certainly, I mean, I could certainly play around. Please again.
I think Port Matilda is below the 8,000 as well.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So I'm happy to play around with those numbers to do an $8,000 minimum for every township and organization. And then try to reallocate the rest, and I could send that back over.
Yeah, that, that was my suggestion again, just, just to help out the smaller municipalities.
And then the question I have is that you will notice that COG did make a request of $170,000, and I have not allocated anything toward that because I didn't get a a strong sense of one way or another. Would you please advise?
I'm a no.
Yeah, I, I would also agree. It just, it, it doesn't, I don't think it makes too much sense to do it to COG, because then you're talking about the water authorities and the sewer authorities and you know, if, if the municipalities within COG, Center, the, the center region COG wants to give an allocation to COG, that's fine, but I think it, it, um, yeah, it doesn't, I, I wouldn't be supportive of it either.
I, yeah, I like the group, but I, I think it complicates things. If, if we start giving money to a group that's not a municipality.
Okay. I'll take that out then. Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to ask your opinion is that there were, along with that, two of the requests that initially came in was the State College Water Authority and Center County Recycles. Neither are government boroughs or municipalities, but I put them in here just for discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think going back to the, you know, the principle that if, if, you know, Milheim Borough wants to give some to their sewer authority, if Haynes. Milheim Borough wants to give some to their sewer authority, if Haynes Township wants to give some to their water authority, you know, Benner Walker Spring want to give a piece to Bring Better Walker, you know, they can do that. So it's, that's how I would answer the questions that come in regarding that.
Okay. And, and again.
I think I would entertain, if, if we have a, a final round where we have extra money and we, and we haven't allocated all, all the funds, and we, you know, we'll look at it then.
Definitely upfront, we shouldn't be looking at it. And I'm a little concerned for later because I think planning looked up that we had something like 47 water and sewer authorities in Center County alone. So it wouldn't be maybe quite as many applicants as the small business program, but we could potentially see a couple hundred applicants just under authorities.
Thank you. All right.
No doubt.
So.
If I could, Mary Kay, sorry, just to respond to Commissioner Dirk's point about Belfont, I think once we get these municipal allocations out, we could, you know, if Belfont feels that this, this need is not enough, because they're looking at getting, I think about 60, I'm looking here at the math I did, 60, 65,000 roughly. So if they need additional funds from that, they can always come back and look and, you know, and request that of us. But I think that's, because they could literally just bill us for the police time they're going to, they're going to need for the rest of the year, and we cut them the money. So I know you.
They, they do need it. I don't think there's any question about that. So the question, my, my question back would be, how do you want to proceed with that?
So either way, however, so if we would give them an allocation, a special allocation, or we go through this process where we say to all the municipalities, here's how much you can spend, the way that they get it is still going to be the same, where they have to, as a governmental entity, it's a, as Z A said, you pay, we pay. So they would have to document how they've expended the money, and then they would get reimbursed, we would reimburse them. Unfortunately, we cannot give, the way that Z A outlined it is, we cannot give governments or municipalities money upfront. They, it's a reimbursement. That's the way that those, that's specifically how the municipalities would need to do it.
Right. Well, that wouldn't be a problem. So do you want me to, do you want me to go back and ask them what the, in other words, they can send us a monthly police bill if you want for the next few months. I mean, how do you want me to do it? And what figure do you want me to use?
Right. So under the math right now, they're looking at about $60,000. So if they, if that's close to what they needed. So if they, again, come back and say, we would like more, we could entertain it at that point. But so again, I mean, this, that, this is almost the perfect way to give them the, perfect way for them to use this CARES Act money. It's, it's helping them to bridge the gap. If they are reducing their police force, they can, you know, utilize these funds. So I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's necessary for us to give them an extra allocation on top of this, if they are able to use this money. But you can tell them, I mean, look, their, their allocation, the way we're talking about it today is roughly 65,000. You know, would that be of help? I, and see what they say.
I'm sure it'll be a help. I think they, they were going to do some technology upgrades and some other things too. So I, I will reach out to them and see what, what their thoughts are. But I, I think we're, the 62,000 is probably not going to get them where they need to go.
What, what I can do also is, I can also send to you, I just, I really appreciate this discussion around this because I could send you some documents that will be, basically, we're going to send them a letter, an agreement, and then they're going to send us something back, and then they're going to be submitting, I've been working with Jason and, and Tom, that how this all happens. So they will be basically sending us invoices for actual expenditures. So Steve, you know, you're right in a lot of ways that they're going to then kind of, you know, basically, we're giving them a chunk of money, and then they're, they're going to be showing us expenses to, to give us that, so that we can give them that chunk of money. We can sign that check.
Well, this is retroactive. So they've got police expenses back to, to March. So that's not, that's not the issue. It's, it's, the total number is what I'm, I, I don't think 62,000 is going to be enough to get it done for, for what they need. So if you would at least entertain the notion that we need to go back and, and revisit this later, I would appreciate it.
I, I'd be more than happy to. Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Be more than happy to revisit it later, certainly.
All right. Well, I'll relay that.
So I can go through and rework these numbers and then get this particular spreadsheet back to you. And I could give you also the documentation, you know, as far as an agreement that we can get this moving. I, I mean, I think every one of us is really, really anxious. I think it was Steve that keeps saying, we got to get some money out the door. So I think all of us are anxious for that. So if we could even get this kind of going in at the same time as the small business, how we, other counties have done this is that they've given their award letter, and then they've given the municipalities up until like October 1st to give us invoices against that money, or October 15th, whatever number we give. And then if they aren't going to spend it, then we know that we can release that money to either other municipalities, more to other municipalities or to other parts. So that's how, that's how this process would work. That sound A okay?
Absolutely. And I think, I think one of the things that I'm most interested about is, is getting those amounts out to municipalities hopefully next week. And it would be with the clear understanding that we're going to be providing you more information about how you can use this, but we just want to let you know, here are your amounts, because it will help some of the municipalities out with budgeting for next year, knowing the fact that, you know, they're working through budgets as much as, as we are. And then in addition, it would allow them to purchase anything that they would need, potentially for the stu, for students returning, anything like that. So I, I just think it's important to get them some sort of letter or, or amount. So.
Okay. So is this something that would be then approved that, I'm sorry, Mark, I, I interrupted you. Please.
That's okay. Mike brought up some good points. And so what I heard you say is that we're going to have a tentative deadline for municipalities of October 15th, let us know how much they're going to spend, which then would allow us enough time to tidy up some loose ends and then do a reallocation. Sounds good. But yeah, let's, let's get them that information as soon as we can, maybe hopefully next week.
Is this something then that would be vote, like if we got the numbers, is that something that would be voted upon at one of the Board of Commissioners meetings then?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty. And then I'll, I'll talk with Margaret about seeing if Natalie, or I think Natalie's still on the phone. Somebody could help me with as far as, I don't have email addresses for these folks or, you know, mailing addresses. So probably email would be the best to send them out.
Oh, yes. Margaret, Margaret has a email list for them and could send that out to them.
Okay.
Are you talking about the municipalities?
Yeah. So the list that's here, you know, as far as Belfont Borough, Benner Township, Boggs Township, you know, this net letter out.
Yeah, and Natalie has one as well. So we, we can just send an electronic one with, with the commissioner's signatures.
Is that agreeable to everybody to do it just that way? The electronic, just say, this is your, I, I want to keep on calling it like a stipend, your grant, this is how much you have. Is that okay to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All righty. I'll work on, I'll work on this tomorrow to try to get those numbers together and get that over to you. And so it is 5:04. I'm happy to continue, but we said we were going to go till five. So I just wanted to invite whichever direction we wanted to go.
I'm fine. How much longer do you think, how much more information do we have to go?
Well, you know, a little bit more.